This meeting of the trustees of the Lamisa Independent School District is now in order. It is 6:00 PM on March 21st, 2024. A quorum is present with all board members present except Melissa Gassetes. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Hughes, will you please lead us in prayer?
Thank you, if you will, pray would be. Lord, we just thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for this wonderful country where we can come together and make our own decisions about what we want to do in our own town and how we want to raise our children and we just thank you for all of that and we just pray that you would guide and direct all of the decisions made here this evening and we just thank you most of all for your son, Jesus. Amen.
Do you need me to stand up?
No, ma'am.
We'll have student recognition?
We have different recognition later. Tonight, we have teachers and our students and I have it later, so just we can jump past that. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm excited tonight to get to introduce some new additions to our staff, multiple new additions to our staff. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about him before he comes up here, but he's also gonna address you. But we have the pleasure of welcoming Coach E from Ramos to Lamisa, Texas, as our new head football coach and athletic director. His wife, Melissa, is with us tonight and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's your birthday. Am I right?
Happy birthday!
Y'all get to leave as soon as this party closes. If he hadn't already taken our coach. Son Daniel is right here. He also has two other children, Zoe and Renee. I'm gonna kinda give you the stats of him and then I'm gonna just talk for a minute, but he currently came from Anna High School where he was the defensive coordinator. Got to see him coaching AT&amp;T Stadium when they won the state championship just this year. Before that, he's been a defensive coordinator and offensive coordinator, special teams coordinator. He was also the boys athletics coordinator at Anna. He had experience in Lubbock Coronado and he had experience in MLO ISD. And y'all heard me say a lot that when we had, we had 79 applicants and one of the biggest things I wanted was someone who had some sort of West Texas in their blood. Because I don't think if you have, if you've never been to West Texas and you don't know anything about West Texas, one, I don't think you're good enough for West Texas, but two, I just don't know that you're gonna come out here and wanna stay because you come out here and you see this different kind of landscape and all of a sudden you think, well, I wanna go back to my trees and my water and not the dirt and the sand. Well, he grew up in Plainview, so I knew he's seen plenty of dirt and sand and I knew that West Texas was in his blood. And I also knew the staff he worked with and he worked for a guy named Seth Parker. Coach played for the Parker family. Much like me, I always hear people have these misconceptions about coaches and he and I were talking about the other day. My father was my athletic director and he expected those coaches to be the best coaches, teachers, and men, and they were our best teachers in the school. And that's how I've always come up and so when I see coaches, that's what I expect and when I hear people say, well, this coach isn't that, that's not what I believe coaches are. And I know that's the kind of man he is. He believes in athletics, he believes in academics. He's excited about football, but he's excited to help turn our entire athletic program around, work with our two principals to make our student athletes the best student athletes that we have had in Lamisa ISD in a very long time. When I called him to offer him the job, I was gonna give him 48 hours and his answer when I said Coach Ramos, and it was late, later in the day than what I was planning on, but I said, Coach Ramos, I would be very excited to offer you the job here in Lamisa High School and his quick answer was, when can I start? And that fired me up. I heard him talk to the kids and I got fired up. I'm gonna let him talk, but when he's done, what I say is, board, staff, community, let's get behind him, let's support him, let's believe him, let's trust him, and as I know you're about to say, let's go do some winning. Coach Ramos and his family, come on up. So, number one, you know, I really wanna make sure that I make a point to say that I'm very grateful, thank God, that he has a plan that he has for Lamisa and he's included me in it. I hope and faith in Jesus Christ, he's never misled me and after working with the people and the kids that I got a chance to meet and work with this week, I'm certain of it. So I'm very happy to be here, very thankful that I get to do this. Like Mr. Ritchie was saying, the thing that I've been, the success that we've had and the relationships that we've built and the success that we've had and all the lessons that came with the ups and downs, the success that we had, taught me the most important thing about being a football coach is that you emphasize winning, is that you teach kids how to have a winning mindset. Winning mindset doesn't, it's not just about how many football games you win, basketball games you win, baseball games you win. Having a winning mindset is anytime you have a challenge that you're faced with, that you learn how to win that. They're gonna have challenges, our student athletes and our students in Lamisa are gonna have challenges from now until their husbands and wives and they're gonna know how to win those challenges. They're gonna know how to go to college and be successful and finish. They're gonna know how to go to the job and be a winner at the job and be the best employee that their company has. They're gonna know how to, when they're raising their children, they're gonna know how to be winners and teaching their children how to be winners and go out and face, and have the same attitude about facing challenges and that the objective should always be to win. And so when we talk about winning, we're not just talking about their sport, we're talking about everything that they do, from how they perform in the classroom, for how they are when they see you at home, when they see their parents at home, to be somebody that the parents can be proud of. So there's a lot that I wanna share with the kids from my experiences, from my success in teaching them not only how to be student athletes, but how to be outstanding people and how to represent our community. I've told them this this week, is that when people come and watch us play and the product that we put out and the people in Lamisa come out and watch us, we're a reflection of Lamisa Athletics and Lamisa High School. But when our visitors come and they see us perform and they see us play and they see how we are on the field, we are a reflection of the Lamisa community. They don't say, oh, that's how the Lamisa football team are. They say, that's how Lamisa is, that's how the Lamisa people. So it's very important to me that we develop them in a way that they understand and they can take on that kind of responsibility. And I hope that growth that they experience in my program and our program and our athletic program at Lamisa High School carries on beyond high school. So they learn that success and they learn that type of commitment and dedication to everything that they do. So again, thank you and I also wanna thank Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Trey Barera, Pastor Boyd, Melanie Jasper, Mr. Carera. I wanna thank you guys for seeing in me who you want to lead the kids in Lamisa. I will not sleep and my, my, the, people gonna tell me that because this is an athletic director and head coaching job that I'm living the dream, but the dream is to win. The dream is for the kids to win big. The dream is to be the winningest program in Lamisa High School history. And so I will not get a good night's rest until we get that done, so I thank you for the opportunity. I hope we get this thing approved, banking on that. So thank y'all for the time. This is my wife, Melissa. I think Mr. Ritchie's already introduced them. It's my son Daniel and I wanna thank them the most because they made the biggest sacrifices. This one was a big one. This was a big one. I rooted them, made a big sacrifice, they've been team players and the thing that meant most to me is this week when he went to his first day of school, he struggled a little bit, but when he got there, just a little time that he's been able to meet a few kids, when I got there, they welcomed him, they high-fived him, they said, hey, Daniel, welcome. And he sent us a text and he says, Dad, this place is great, it's better than Anna. And so that meant a lot to me. And so again, thank y'all, I appreciate it. I appreciate y'all's time, thanks for putting up with that, but be ready to win, be ready to win. Don't sit down yet. Hey, I'd like to get a picture, everybody, real quick, the board and the family, can we get a picture, everybody, real quick?
Yes, sir.
Before y'all go on y'all's way. So you just wanna come over here, Melissa, Daniel, everybody just to stand up around.
That's the one we can picture, see you.
I do, I press. If we don't tell our story, someone else will. We can kinda park the seats up.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, y'all scoot over. I'm trying to hide.
You gotta be with the family, Anna.
One of y'all did it. Well, one of y'all did it for me.
Okay, you know the drill, you gotta one, two, three.
Or just start snapping.
Come on, come on.
Daniel, you gotta be careful.
All right, one, two, three, snap.
Should've gone like that.
Oh, oh. You gotta do this, you gotta, wait, Kevin, try having it.
Trevor's gonna count, he doesn't know letters.
Oh, yes, happy birthday!
Take you to Spurlock's.
Thank you.
They have their original Spurlock's in Anna.
I did not know.
Well, when they moved, she opened it up up there.
I didn't know that.
Fern might be.
And, and guys, if you're here to meet the coach, y'all, y'all can shake his hand and coaches, I'm telling y'all, y'all, I know right now you feel pressured to stay, about an hour and a half from now, you're gonna be like, we should've took that opportunity and brought it out. All right, so I'm telling y'all, this is a grand opportunity to escape.
He's gonna be a bit, but I'd love for you to stay, they're all right there, all right?
That's a team player right there, okay? Sorry, Daniel.
She won't be sung to at Pedrosas yet.
I guess not.
Okay, what are we doing next?
We could just go on and then we'll get back on, yes, ma'am.
I guess we'll go next to the routine operation.
Make a motion to approve this present?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Now we'll do the financial report. Mr. Meddy?
Got a crowd, you know, usually then I'll keep enjoying this.
This is the fun part. I'm excited.
Highlight of the meeting.
He's been waiting for it.
He's telling a lot, y'all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the general fund by function for the month of February. The, a couple of things I'd like to point out and we'll move on to the next item is that last year at this time, we were $1.6 million for the monthly activity and this year we're at $1.6 million, it's up a little bit, it's about a $37,000 difference. And at the year end, I mean, on the budget side, our total budget last year was $19 million and this year it, I mean, this year's $19 million, last year it was $20.8 million, about a $1.6 different, $1.6 million different swing from last year over this year. So we're on a tight budget this year. Next page is the revenue, year and date. One item here, two items here. One, if you go to the far right, you'll see in the, the percentage amount, 99.97 for local revenues we've collected for the year. We'll collect more than that, we should go over 100% based on what we budgeted and what we collected, so that's good. In the second column where it's got FYTE activity, you'll see a dollar amount at the bottom, that's $29,000 under other income and that's just a point, I believe that's what we got in our auction, fortunately that, most of that's from the auction, that'd be added here, so we did pretty well.
How much was that, did you say, was for the auction?
I believe it's $29,280, there may be a little other income in there, but.
Frankie, Frankie knows, Frankie's got the number.
I'll be good, Frankie. Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, it was a good auction. The next page is the monthly capital outlay. There are three items on there. The middle item, that's $31,492, was food service, item of $240, paid through the excess revenue that they have. The financial statement this year reported $301,000 in excess revenue for the fund balance from food operations. That's cumulative, but we've gotta figure out a way to spend some of that money this year, so. The next page is the monthly capital outlay, just showing you that the funds were $199 and $240, general operation, cafeteria money. The next item is the monthly check register. And I'm just gonna open that up for those that have had a chance to look at it, if they have any questions.
Why don't you hit, because we did have a finance committee meeting earlier, so just hit the, hit the ones they asked about and then if anybody else wants to hit one, they can.
The primary one that was asked about was for the math department.
It's on in there a little bit.
It was a little over $6,000, seemed like quite a bit for.
Oh, was it furniture?
Well, it says Jason Froman, but it's actually for the entire math department. It was supplies for all math teachers, all math classrooms, which makes it make a lot more sense, yeah.
Yeah, and that's his first purchase of the year or their.
And they have an $8,000 budget, so it's all.
And they have an $8,000 budget, so they're, it's all reasonable.
How are we doing on bus repairs and vehicle repairs?
Well, I will tell you, I met with Randy today and y'all know I've been fighting this, I know we need new buses, yet because of the finances, it's a, it's a tough deal. She, we've got two travel buses that have gone down again and we're working on those. The, the good news is the one we ordered, I was told today, is 10 days out. We literally are going to pick it up sometime in the next two weeks and that one is, that's gonna help.
That's activity bus?
The new one, yes, ma'am.
Activity.
So I'm excited about that, the two yellow buses are still, they're still out there a little bit. But what I tasked her with was just putting feelers out to see with the two that are not really operational, how much could we get for them so we could possibly turn that around and just as a team collaborate and investigate what the best option is moving forward as far as another bus goes. I do think within the next three to four years, I'd still like another one, but as I've told y'all, with the way our, all public school finances right now, I do not wanna be fiscally irresponsible, I just wanna make a good choice. But we know it's a need, so we're just gonna have to kinda look, collaborate and see what the best move is. But I told her to kinda research our options on that. So to answer your question, Ron, yes, we're spending a little bit too much money on here, yes.
Saying a lot like a word.
Yes, sir.
With the changes that you, that's been made out of maintenance department, what kind of, what do you answer, what kind of trend are you seeing off your?
Well, we know that, we know that trends downward. You can see that the control makes a difference. I think we've, along with camera that's been installed, I think we're, I think we're gonna see, we're not gonna see any wastage or usage, it's very trackable. So what we see is that they're using the keypad correctly, putting in their, whatever the bus number is, so it's well documented and I think that's the key. Hard to say exactly what we're saying, you know, gas prices and trips are different this year from last year, but it is, we can say that the process is very good, so we know that we're, we're gonna save, so we're happy with that. Anything else on the check register? All right. Next item on the board is the investment financial report. This is the quarterly report that we, I mean, the record, the first item, the first, on your screen, you're gonna see a couple of them. I'm looking at the one that's got peak tint to it, it's the second one in the row and it's for the month of December, January, and February. And you can see our total balance in January was 19, almost 19.9 million, for January it was 19.5 and for February it's 19.4 million dollars. For the period, we earned interest of $208,780. And also to the far right, you can see that our interest rates averaging around 1.4, 4.29, 4.31, you can just, just track it down, just about under 5%. The next item is, it should be at the bottom and it should look like this, it's got 12 months of information there. And the reason why I added this one, this is not normally on the report, it's accumulation of everything that happens for the year. And you can see on there that we've got six months forward and if you come down in that second column under October, you'll see a total of about $408,000. That's all interest earned for the first six months of the, first six months of the year. So we're in a pretty good place because we budgeted $450,000 in that account for the full year. So we're gonna come out well ahead on the interest earned if the interest rate holds up like this. Also on the very bottom where you see those added columns and the few numbers in red at the bottom, that is our, that is tracking our unassigned or unrestricted fund balance. The very bottom number is $10 million, almost $11 million. That's the fund balance that will be unrestricted. We had a little problem last year with that and this year we're gonna monitor it. It'll be on here monthly and you'll see it quarterly so that we can track it to make sure we're in compliance over the first revenue. Also, I think that we made some changes, we had $12 million sitting in the committed column in our financial statements and we wanna change that, we wanna drop it down to $7 million. And I think five of that's gonna be for construction and two of that's gonna be for transportation. And I think we'll have to make a motion at some point in time to accept that it's required.
We're gonna do it at the, as soon as you're done talking about it.
So I'm done talking about that and if y'all wanna move on, I mean, that's, that's what we have, that way it'll give us a better idea of what our unrestricted fund looks like. It's all, it'll be at the top of the, you know, our, processing of our priorities will keep you in mind, so anyway, I think we have a motion that we're gonna make on that, I'm not sure if we need to go to the other.
Yes, sir, I said let's go ahead and do this.
Can I explain why, I mean, what's going on?
The audit. This was, if you'll go back to that night and we kinda talked about it in 2020 and it hadn't been done since then. And it is something that we need to make sure is on our financial report every month, so we're always tracking it, but it is to simply, no money's going anywhere, it's just reallocating it, so we are in line for our audit. That is 100% what we're doing.
I'm gonna motion to change the total committed fund balance from 12 million to 7 million total, of which that 7 million, 5 million go towards construction and 2 million go towards transportation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
I think the next item that we have on the agenda is donation. You should have an attachment to that, it's $4,000 from Premier Ford and it's designated for the South Elementary.
Can I stop there for a minute, just because the person that is responsible for it just happens to be here for something else tonight, do you mind standing up, Ms. Justice? Some of y'all went to the first literacy night, I think it was around Christmas, correct?
That was our first trial run, so do not judge it off the track.
But she had another one and what, what she's gotten where she tries to do is, I mean, it's all based around literacy, but every kid leaves there with a book and that, that's not easy to do and you deserve accolades, so thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is purchases over $50,000 and there's an attachment to that that's styled as Howard Technology Solutions or E-grants, I'm sorry, E-rates. And you'll see an amount there of $56,859. The total amount of the grant is $260,000. Our obligation to receive the balance of that, that grant is that we have to pay out $56,859 and it's all used for technology and Howard is a technology solution business and, and this E-grant, this E-rate has been around for a number of years and it's basically gonna give us the, the difference of about $3,000 that we can spend and it'll kinda, it will come out of our pockets.
So Mr. Sellers, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We've got two years to spend.
Mr. Sellers was gonna be here tonight, but we have had massive internet trouble over the last two days and he is out still trying to fix it. But E-rate is a grant that has always been around and we have, we haven't really gone after it for a while. He did, he actually attached the grant, you can kinda scroll through it and see it in your board book. So while it says we're spending $56,859, we actually are not, in order to get the 260, we gotta spend this 56, so really when you do the math, we're sitting at about $201,000 gains, 100%. So like you said, we'll start, we'll, this'll be a continuous every two years, we'll reapply and we'll get more money every two years to help spend on that.
So you approve them $56,000 and we give you $206,000.
So how, for how long is that?
That's two years and then we'll have to do the grant again and we'll give more money.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. It's, and it'll never be the same amount, earnest, because it's based on student population, it's based on several things, but it'll always be a pretty substantial amount of money.
All right. We wanna go, move on to the Texas.
Why don't we go ahead and approve the financial report and then you can go there.
Make a motion to approve this presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
We officially appealed that, we appealed it last year and we're appealing it again this year because of the difference between what we pay or what our values are at local level and what the state comptroller's office says it is, so we always try and get, usually what, there's no, there's always a good reason to appeal it regardless of what the state's numbers are, but because we usually benefit from it, so it's, it's, the value is that most of the time when we come out with the change, attorneys work, work to the point where we usually, they usually modify our local values to be closer to the state values, so.
We had this discussion in major depth the year, we're closer this year. To me, the bright light is it used to be a, a rent problem for a few rural schools like us, now it's a statewide problem. And it becomes a statewide problem, you usually get more help from the government to help fix it. But as he said, if we appeal it, we'll at least close our gap a little bit because it does affect our funding.
Has there been any movement on values coming up?
Minimal.
Here?
I would say there's movement in the knowledge that everybody knows it needs to happen, but I still think it's harder to act, if that makes sense. But I do think we're in better shape than we were sitting a year ago. I think people are more aware of the, what it does to us than they were.
Wasn't most of the problem in the residential side?
Yes, sir, oh, it's 100%, it's not, it's 100% in the residential side.
Good point, Kevin, it's all, all residential.
That's, that's the hard part?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, I appreciate it. These are the administrative reports?
And after this, and, all right, I'm gonna start with this leadership thing and I'm gonna let these, these guys talk a little bit. I had mentioned to y'all that we have, we've joined with some other schools to start a leadership program. I wanna establish and I'm gonna talk later about grow your own teachers, I also wanna grow our own leadership and that could be an assistant principal, a principal, a curriculum person, a superintendent, it's Trenton, I know, it's, I'm down the road. So Robert McClain, who is superintendent of plans and several other superintendents got together and we started the first ever leadership cohort and all of the schools got together and are sending people and it is basically a column. And all of the schools got together and are sending people, and it is basically a college class for free. It's, they're gonna talk a little bit about it, Dr. Sheets from LCU, it's held at LCU, correct? They, they have projects, they have graduation, it's the full nine. But what these teachers, while they still are teachers, are getting a good dose of what it is like to be an administrator. I think it's amazing, and I think that the, the people that were chosen, these principals are gonna speak briefly about why this group was the group, but I wanted to bring that group because they've already started, so they could give you a little bit about who's been chosen. And I did tell them all, keep it brief, keep it short, but I've also heard Trenton Jones was the one talking. And I, I, I do wanna say, I jump with Trenton all the time. This group is a group, I've had the pleasure of being the principal for all but two of them, but I've been in the two that I haven't been a principal for, Callie's and Samantha's room, a ton. This group represents the kind of group that we want with our kids in Lamisa Independent School District. They are a hundred percent in the classroom every single day, and a hundred percent with those that do coaching or extracurricular outside of the classroom, or literacy lunches, they give you everything they got, every single day. And that's why I was really proud of the group that got chosen, because I, there are many applicants that are also worthy, and I wanna, I'm hoping this is a thing that goes two, three years, because I want the next group to get to do it too, but I could be proud of y'all on the first group. So, thank y'all, Trenton, it's all yours. Oh, yeah, y'all can talk first, y'all wanna tell them how y'all got it, right? And I think Trent's gonna talk, but I do, if, if the other ones, once they're done, wanna say just a few words I'd love for you to, because this is an important deal, it's a big deal. But you got three seconds, get up there, hold, yes, go ahead.
Well, on our campus, we had fourteen different people apply for the position. And the reason that Callie and Samantha stood out is because what we saw in the classrooms, just to be honest. I was really impressed with Callie, you know, I've got to work with both of them for two years, you know, since, or really not even two years, you know, whatever. But, just walking in their classroom and the environment, and their, the kids were so comfortable learning, and that's my big thing, like, I want all of our kids to know that that's where they're supposed, you know, comfortable, and that's where they're supposed to be, and it's a safe environment. And they're taking risks every day, and that's something that we talk about, you know? Being vulnerable so your kids can learn, and if we, we fall, it's okay, because that's how we learn best, right? And so, Callie, I remember last year I was starting to see some things where she was having student-led learning, and Crutcher does the same thing, just the kids are taking ownership of the classroom, they're just monitoring what's going on. At the end of the day, that's the kinda classrooms you wanna see. Also, when I came in the first year, Callie was really good at like, coming in, helping me, helping me understand systems that were going on, it was, you know, everything was new to me, and being in Lamisa was new to me, too. So, she really stepped up and helped me learn a lot of things that I needed to learn on that end of the spectrum. And then, what can I do to help you? And Ms. Crutcher's been the same way, and we've talked and had conversations of where their future goals are, and they have a love for Lamisa, they don't wanna go anywhere, this is where they wanna stay and give back a hundred percent. And to me, that was a big thing, because that's where I'm at, I wanna stay and grow. And I wanna grow them, so that eventually, one day, maybe they're replacing me as I get to move up, you know? And so, I really believe in, you, you wanna bring people with you as you grow and learn, and it's a continuous space. And I just feel really blessed to get to work with them every day, and the innovation that, that we're bringing in because of ideas that they bring to the table. So, I think they're gonna be excellent, excellent leaders and administrators, and whatever else blows their pathway.
Tipton, do you wanna say anything?
I'll be, I'll be real short, I didn't have as many applicants. Our list was pretty, pretty short, you could've counted it on three fingers, if that gives you an idea of how many we had. But they were all really good applicants, and it was a hard decision.
The application, a lot of people didn't apply, because it wasn't just, hey, are you interested? Like, I typed up an application, and we treated this the real deal, and it was a lengthy deal.
It was, and, and they can attest to, they, they, there were some I feel probably didn't do it because they didn't wanna put the time in, well, that's only right there, it's probably not, not for them. But the, I, I selected, the one I selected is Ms. Justice, and you can already probably tell why I selected her. She, she's, she's little, but she's a bulldog. And she does not, I, I, I don't mind her bringing her opinion to me, because it's always gonna be honest, and it's always gonna be about the kids, what's the best interest? It's not her interest, it's not anybody else's, it's, it's all about the kids. Anytime there's a project, she runs with it. So, I trust her with several things, and they're usually her idea. She's like, I don't care if I've gotta spend extra time doing this, or I gotta come up here on the weekends, I wanna do this, because it's good for the kids, and you see that with the literacy lunches, and those are her ideas. So, that was, that, I just, I, I think all those applicants, I know all of them, they, I, I think we've got a really good group of, of people that, and I, I thank Richie for the program, it's an excellent idea, I wish I would've had this years ago when this thought started to enter my head, so. But yeah, that's, I think it's a good group, and I only got one up there, but you're, you'll get to know her, so.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Superintendent Ritchie, and members of the school board appreciate this opportunity. I had a handful also of applicants, not as many as Ms. Jasper, but I was given the opportunity, somebody saw something in me and offered me a program to do also, and so, I always said, if I had an opportunity to pay that forward, I would, and so, he's one of four that I, I'm still working with the other three on my personal, and I call him in, and I talk to him about leadership, and we have discussions. And sometimes they're hard, they're hard, they're difficult conversations to have, but I tell him, if I'm gonna be a good leader to you, I gotta tell you everything, the good and the bad, and so, you learn, learn how to navigate that. But Trenton, I seen him in his application, if he'd said it was almost a dissertation. I appreciate the hard work, it shows that he was ready to get into this and be serious about it, and he's a good, he's, I call him a kid, because he's just a young, young, he's got a lot to, to learn, but I think he's on the right track, and he loves kids, and the kids love him. You can see it every day that this kid's come up to him, he's built those relationships, and once you build those relationships, those kids are doing anything for you. I appreciate Trenton, and all that he does for our kids at Lamisa High School, thank you.
Thank you. Hannah? Guys, Christie asked me, her, her daughters are in the track meet, and they may be running the hurdles for the first time, and y'all know me well enough to know, I told her, you need, you need to be with those kids. So, Hannah's here to speak on behalf of North.
So, at North, we have five applicants, and so, we chose Julie and Trey, and that's really because they already have so many amazing leadership qualities, they're already part of our leadership team at North. They are the team leaders of planning in their grade levels, they're fourth and fifth grade, and they are very innovative, creative, risk takers. They encourage everybody at North to always try their best, and they encourage myself and Ms. Griffin as well to just give it their all, and, and, I mean, Richie said keep it short and sweet, so that's all I have, but they're amazing, and we're excited to see what they can do and what they can give back to us, and also grow myself and Ms. Griffin as well. Thank you.
All right, so leadership team, come on up. Frankie, if you'll get a pic of them while they're talking up here or something, I'd like, I'd like to, I would like this moment to live in infamy. Trenton, you gonna talk first?
We'll start it off.
Do I need to set the timer? Got you.
I can cut him off that word, we don't need that timer to start.
It's already started, so.
Okay, so, first, I just wanna say thank you to our principals, you know, Mr. Ritchie for even having this and choosing us. I think it's a, it's an honor and a blessing, you know, especially, you know, for us being, to me, I've been telling everybody, this is, this, the whole district is going in the right direction. And yesterday at the leadership, or at the, um, job fair, you know, it was easy to talk to people and tell them that this campus is moving, and this whole, I'm sorry, this whole district is moving in the right direction. And I think that it is because I think we're putting the right pieces in the right spot. And I think that this leadership program is also gonna help us move in the right direction. You know, so, from the, from the jump, when you walk into the LCU, LCU room, you have a room full of just leaders. You have superintendents, you have teachers, you have head coaches, and, you know, it's very inviting, and everybody is talking to everybody, and I think that was big starting off, because one thing that I can say by myself is, you know, I'm kind of in my shell when it comes to meeting people, but, you know, as you know, we have to open up. But I think that's huge, walking in, especially for a leader to be that inviting to come in and talk to. You know, the first thing they did that stuck out to me that was huge is, they asked a question, they said, what does all leaders have in common? And everybody in the whole room was kinda sitting there thinking, and I'll sit by, LCU's president, he raised his hand, 'cause I guess he knows all the answers to it, but, you know, what he says is, all leaders have in common, they said, they all have followers. And I think that that right there stuck out to me huge, because I, I wouldn't even have thought about that, but every leader has followers. And I think that being a good leader is you have to have followers, you're willing to believe in your plan and trust in your plan. That's the first thing that they, they taught us. And also, too, you know, it is a little bit, a little bit Christian, so they started out with a Bible verse, and the Bible verse was Hebrews, let me make sure I'm right, thirteen and seven, and that is, remember your leaders, they taught God to message you, remember how they lived and died, and copy their faith. And they had us think of one person, and text that person, and just tell them, you know, thank you, or to talk to that person, tell them that you're the reason why, you know, I wanna be a leader, so on, so on. I think that that was really cool that they started out with that, because they're right, you know? You have one person in your life who, who got you to that spot, and made you wanna be a leader, because they had that huge impact in your life. And, you know, that was just the, the first ten, what, fifteen minutes of it? And I think that right there spoke volumes in what the program's gonna be like. So, after that, we moved into a room, and they're gonna talk more about it, but we moved into a room, and we got to just meet everybody, and then also, too, they had us write down pros and cons of a good leader and a bad leader. And I think right there, you know, you had a lot of, because it's just good hearing from superintendents, you know? Get to, to talk with them one-on-one and hear what they think a good leader is, and what they think, you know, bad traits in leader is. And we hung up signs and everything, and, you know, that right there, too, was just something that, you know, for me, because as a, as a young cat, you know, like the Callie, you know, I, I never in a, in a million years would have imagined being chosen for, you know, a leadership position at a twenty-seven-year-old. But, you know, being around those people really has helped me see some of the, you know, the bad traits that I do, and then some of the good traits I do, and I think that this Leadership Academy is going to build a lot of leaders for this, this community, and I think that, you know, the people standing right here are for these kids and for the community, and, and it shows, and, you know, I keep going back to the job fair, but one thing that I told everybody is, I plan on coming to Lamisa for one year, and, you know, I fell in love with it. And I think it's because every year I've seen growth, and not even, you know, I don't, not the whole system, but the kids, and then now I'm seeing just growth in the entire school district, and now I'm seeing, you know, things, things like this really, it's gonna bring people to this town and make people see the, the worth of Lamisa and the worthiness of it, so.
Thank you.
Well, like you said about when we went to LCU, one of the things that really stuck out was how collaborative it was. We're in a room full of like-minded people who have the same goals that we do. We're at different points, you have some principals there who wanna become superintendents, and then you have teachers who wanna move up, or coaches, but you're all there, learning from each other and getting to see perspectives, and where are those superintendents, their failures, we get to learn from those, but also from their successes. So, just the collaboration and the networking that we already have established was really awesome. Also, on campus, Mr. Tipton and Ms. Clement have already given me the opportunity to get hands-on experience at South. So, if Tipton's in meetings, or Clement is out for meetings, I get to step into an admin role and kind of run like our AP does through the building, which has been incredible, actually getting to do hands-on experience on the campus, while also getting that experience and learning all of those things at the academy all at the same time. So, having those things. For our Leadership Academy, we also have a passion project that each of us will do, and our passion project is built around bettering our district, and, you know, revolves around our kids. Unknowingly, I had already started the literacy lunches that I started in December, we did a Polar Express lunch. In March, we did the Dr. Seuss lunch. So, being able to build and grow off of that, and then having all of those superintendents and leaders that can help me along to, you know, build upon things, opportunities that I already have at South, build upon that has been really incredible. I think everybody else also has those admin roles on their campuses, too, where they get to step in. So, just having both of those together, I think is gonna be incredible.
Anybody else?
No.
Last thing I'll add is, you know, I think that we're the only campus who bought, brought, how many teachers are on there? Six teachers? You know, you have a lot of principals there, superintendents, so I think that, you know, us being teachers, being chosen for this is gonna be huge, because not only do we wanna move up to be in the leadership position, it's gonna help us also be leaders in the classroom, and help us out in, in that aspect as well. So, you know, I think that that's huge, that you chose six teachers and not, you know, just principals who are already in that position, because it is, in my opinion, something that we are gonna grow into from this program. It's gonna be a huge step in our role, in our journey to becoming, you know, a higher up, I guess you could call it, so, thank y'all for that.
Well, thank y'all, I'm proud of y'all, thank y'all very much. All right, guys, it is my turn, so I'd leave. I'll go ahead and get going, if that's okay, Ms. Gonzalez, and just keep on rolling. Enrollment, and I've got it up on the boards here, so y'all can, y'all can look at things as I talk.
Are we still, are we still growing?
We are, plus, that's plus five, so not a lot, but that's plus five since last month. I mean, that's, that's not bad, it's, it's always funny, some campuses go up a little, some go down, but it's that bottom number that I want, it's pretty close. So, yeah, we were at one thousand five hundred and twenty in February, we're at one thousand five hundred and twenty-five as of yesterday. And, you know, I, I do, I think this is the bottom of a big future of pretty continuous growth.
Where, where do we lose the most in, in the academy, is that people that graduate?
Like, when we started the year, we had four, with it down to one, that means three will graduate. Yeah, that academy number's a cool number, don't lose them, you, they may, you know, so, there, there's one left. I'm not real sure who it is, Mr. Crowe. We need to check. Baker does a great job, she texts us every time one graduates, we go over there, take pictures, give them hugs, it's, it's, it's a cool deal. And then, of course, we'll cycle at the end of the year and have a ceremony for them, so that we can all recognize them. So, my goals, I, I try to update them all the time and attach them, and Ms. Gonzalez will kinda help me reference this to the training we went to Tuesday night. One thing that stood out to me, because the first hour was about superintendent evaluation, and a lot of that was making sure that there's evidence for the goals. And I get up here and I talk about stuff all the time, but without those goals, you don't know what ties to what. And so, one of the things, there were not many superintendents, it was mostly board members, but one of the things they, they told us is as we present stuff, to kinda remind you on which goals everything ties back to. So, that's something you'll see different this time. Everything I talk about, it's gonna say district goals, one, two, three, four, or whatever, so you can kinda see what ties to what. All right, so, and there's, there's your first example, so it's been a busy week, and I'm gonna talk about some speed bumps here in a minute, but I was telling somebody, I haven't seen the light of day at my house since, I think, Saturday night, because we've been job fairing, we've been traveling, we had the training, we had one at, see me, I was pointing somewhere, where'd you go? There's something almost every single night. And I wanted to talk about the job fair, and I was glad Trenton referenced them a while ago, because, guys, we are on the right track. We are now to the point where it's just a matter of continuing to build that bridge from the day they meet us to getting them here. We went to Tech, and we went to Amarillo, and then Dr. Nelson and Ms. Griffin went to UTPB this week. And Tech splits it into two days, and the first day, they invite everybody, but the only ones that go, and I told Frankie, I said Frankie, if you wanna chime in tonight, I'm gonna let you, but y'all go get them. The only ones that go are the big dogs. All right, so there's Lamisa, Texas, sitting in the middle. There's no one else from West Texas in the right behind us, it's Katie. All right, on this side is Fort Worth ISD, over here is Houston ISD, and those other schools just don't go. And they'll attest to it, we have people going from our table, telling other people in this room, all these other schools, y'all need to go talk to the Lamisa table. And it makes me proud, you know, and it's still hard, that, when they're signing at the, at the, in Wasatch County, Nelson, I know you have Wasatch County ties, they're, they're signing there, says starting page sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. That's still tough to compete with, but they're starting to see what we're building here. We had one that I think would've gotten the van with us and come home with this, and just left her stuff in her apartment, and been like, I'm good. Agreed?
Yes, and her friend emailed me yesterday.
And they were good, they're good, they're good teachers, and so, you know, and I was on the superintendent, and this all goes together, I was on a superintendent call earlier, and in the finance committee the other day, we were talking about certified teachers and uncertified teachers, and it is a, it is a statewide problem. That's what the commissioner leads with, is what are y'all doing to get teachers? And there was a group on there talking about their grow your own program, which that is something we were really, really working on fixing. But he said the the in in two thousand twenty-three, which is now the main source of teachers, are alternate certification, emergency certification, zero education courses. That they make up sixty percent of the teachers in the state of Texas now, which at one point it was just a small amount. And then he goes on to talk about, they have done studies about when teachers go to a place, what makes them leave, what makes them stay. And what makes them stay is the support they get the first year. Because when we all first started, it was here's your keys, go. You either made it or you didn't. And I mean, there were times, it it it's not times, it's tough. And that's the other thing that I am really proud of what we're doing. And when we have people come to our table, I think that's why they like us, because we don't lie to them, we keep it extraordinarily real. Because that's, y'all know me, I am me, am I not? And and Trenton's right there with me. And because Trenton's a magnet, y'all, for young people. And we'll get them hooked and then Trenton will catch two more and I'll pass those on to the principals. And we just keep them going. And we had one that just kept coming to the table, you know, and we haven't got no candy. And so I do realize there is still, and I'm not gonna call it a disconnect. When they leave us and the personalities go away, there's that dead time where they do see the the money and the big schools and this and that. But I I mean, I thought we were making progress last year, I'm telling you, we're making even more progress. And it's all it's gonna take is talk to start getting some. When when that guy told me, well, I was told to come to that, there was a guy over there that told me, you need to go to the Lamisa table. To me, that's a huge victory in a room full of all those those bigots. Do you want to talk about, you shouldn't even ask. Do you want to say anything about it?
Second year that I've gone to job fair, and it's tough of trying to.
It's work.
I think he's coming to the border.
It's tough trying to find a way to stand out, especially when you're like, like you said, you're standing next to Wasatch County I S D with a sign that has lights around it saying sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. And so we we tried to get creative this year, tried to really find a way to get people to look at us, honestly. Like yesterday, we walked in at Texas Tech Job Fair and I had this huge frame that Matt Roach created for us that says Future Tour. And so the three that we met at the night before were, I mean, they booked it to our table to come and take a picture with that frame. And so, and nobody else had a frame like that, so we're we're trying to do it against people, realize and know who Lamisa is and that we can't compete with with school dis- with other school districts, maybe not in pain, but in support.
And I I'll tell you, it's funny, at the Tech, when they put all the West Texas people together, at the the second day, when you walk in, it's all the Fort Worth and Dallas and Wasatch County, Lubbock and Lubbock Cooper. And you gotta walk all the way back to the back and there's a long row of us and Brownfield and Andrews and Snyder and Big Spring and and all of them. And we're at the, and it was the same way last year, we're at the top, like you gotta walk here and turn left and we're on the left and it's a long row. Henrietta, is it Henrietta? How are you saying? They love us because they're right next to us. Nobody gets past us. So they get our leftovers, right? But literally Brownfield had five people just sitting there staring at us the whole time because they don't get past us. And once we're done with them, we said, we're right back the other way. And I mean, we we, I think we're doing a really good job and I think they're buying into it. Like I said, now we've just got to keep on working on getting one, two, three, four out here, so the word doesn't just spread at job fairs, it spreads for the whole big enchilada. In that same T E A call, the thing he said today, and I, we've had some hard meetings tonight, y'all. And they said superintendent's job, you got a thousand things coming at you, but your job, you have to be a micromanager of the culture. And I believe that and I think in Lamisa, we've seen that. I do think we've come a long way. Um I was joking with Ms. Gonzalez the other day when she said she wanted to go to the superintendent evaluation. I told her, if you don't feel, if you don't think I've, I feel like I'm getting evaluated every day, you just don't know me very well. I am not happy with where we are. I told him today, there's zero to a hundred, I think we've come a long way, but I still think we're at twenty-five. At best, we got a long ways to go, but I feel like we are definitely, we have not taken any steps out. Every step we take is the right way. And there are times I feel like we take huge strides. There are times where I feel like it's baby steps, but as long as the steps keep moving forward, we're just gonna keep on, keep on, keep on. But they talked about things and they had Lamar Consolidated on there talking about what are they doing? And I wrote these down as they were doing it. And intentional and consistent teacher support and P D. Used to, it was just like, again, even if you did support, you had a first year teacher thing. And again, once they were going first year teacher, you assume they knew everything they needed to know, even though they've never been in a room. And then you just, they're off on their own. And we stopped doing that two or three years ago. And now we have checks throughout the year for these people. I say that I think we do good. I don't think we're as good as we can be though. I think we can still get better. Would you not agree? And we also asked those job fair people, what do you want in your first job? And that's what they all say. And so I told them on the way home, we just got to keep on finding ways to support our people. So once they get here, they're here, right? They're they're Trenton Jones in his fifth year and I can guarantee you, didn't think he'd be here one. I always make fun of them. Well Frankie was born here, so he he was always here. But I know Jamie Baum, and I've said it many times, she didn't plan on, she thought she was gonna be one and out. How many? Twenty-three. And I tell you, you either come to Lamisa for a year or you come to Lamisa forever. And we're all, we're all evidence, you know? But I've had a total now of a decade. And I don't want to go anywhere. You know, this is where I want to be, this is the kids I want to help, this is this is the school I want to lead. And I just think it's exciting and and they hear that, those people hear that and they just get sucked in. Mental health, one thing the commissioner said today is, he just said, never think your adults are okay. We are on our students, but never think your adults are okay. That doesn't mean they're not okay, but make sure you're always taking care of your adults. And you know, there's different ways to do that. Uh and I wrote Grow Your Own on here because I do think we've got some ideas. I am one that wants instant change, but this Grow Your Own is gonna take two or three years to get it, where it starts cycling people back from our school, back into our school. And I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later. And then I typed the bottom one because I believe in this and I'm gonna talk about high expectations here in a minute, but I don't believe in, and I'm the same as a dad. I love my kids and y'all know that. And they know I love them, but they also know I expect a lot of them. And that's how I treated my teams, that's how I treated my classrooms, and that's how I treat my adults. And that's what we have to establish in this district. Yes, relationships are number one, but we do expect a lot of everybody that comes through Lamisa Independent School District. Alright, moving on. One act play, and Cindy, if you'd like to talk about it too, y'all heard us talk, guys, I thought we were fantastic. She, as a coach in the stands, she she said she thought we had done better. But overall, would you agree with me that our kids had a very good year?
I I do. I they they've had a very good year. We, my daughter's been in it since her freshman year. And coming into it her freshman year when we had four people. And each year, they've gotten better and better and better. And this by far, I can say, has been their best show. Now, there was a couple of scenes I didn't care for, I wanted to pull out of it.
I feel like, I feel like, I noticed it too, not just with us, but with others.
Yes.
And I feel like that's the, the kids probably always want to be a little edgy, right? But I too, some of them, I was like, nah, I can't be there, they don't do that.
But they they real, they they did well. I mean, and you can see, and these kids have not, not all of them, but majority of them have not been part of a a sports team or different other kinds of teams. And to find, to see them, this is their team, this is their family.
And they're proud of it and I love it.
They're so proud of it and you can see, and I've I've, like I said, I've watched them grow from freshman to senior year. And it's amazing how they've come out and how they embrace themselves with each other. And they really count on each other, not just in the si- in in their theater team outside. They've 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 really made themselves a family and they, I I was heartbroken for them. But like Richie said, as a coach, sitting out in the stands, the first five, ten minutes into it, I could see that it wasn't as as good as they've done before.
What 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 I like, and it kind of goes with the theme of everything, is you can tell all those other schools, like they they respect Lamisa now. Like, we're one of the big dogs in that room. And it's just another place where we're starting to grow and improve. But if you see those kids, they they they're great. Uh congratulate them, tell them good job. And Mr. Carr, he goes, saw them at least twice, traveling to places, so thank you for that. Lights at South Elementary, a couple of, and I'm gonna talk about this here in a minute. The the day, the the way my day goes is I I get calls and emails on speed bump, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. So that's where my attention is. And if I don't get a call from a principal, an A P, a board member, a parent, a kid, then I may not know about these yet because no one's brought them, so my attention's over here. Well, lights at South Elementary, one of them, our lights are out on the walking track. And that's a big deal. And I didn't know that till I was out there walking. And there were some kids out there practicing with their dad in baseball and they said, Richie, what about the lights? And that was, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, but I did want y'all to know, I called Ray there that night. And as of today, they're back up and running. And uh that that's a pretty populated deal. So uh y'all see things like that, tell tell me, because I I I don't usually walk that track, wouldn't know.
It's used quite a bit.
It is, it is. And so I'm glad that we were able to get that back because it gets dark. It gets real dark and on that corner and it it gets real dark. So I'm glad we were able to get that back up. Okay, so I move this to the top of the stuff because this is the thing I'm most excited about. And when you see district goals, district goal one has got to be our driving force because that is student achievement, right? Two is recruitment, retention of teachers. Um you know, they all kind of go into everything. And that's why this one has one, two, three, and five, because this is, and I've been telling y'all, we got big positive change coming to Lamisa, not just Lamisa I S D, Lamisa Texas. And I had told y'all I had applied for a grant that was gonna allow us to explore some ways. Here's, and here's the big picture. And I'm just gonna read it. I asked somebody, I said, would y'all, y'all think it's better if I explain it or read it? And they were like, Richie, you talk too much, just read it. But if you'll jump down to this part right here, alright. P Tech campuses, and I'm gonna tell you what that means. They enroll historically underserved students targeted at risk and economically disadvantaged. That's us. Alright, they enable students to earn a high school diploma alone with an associate's degree, level one or level two certificate, or industry based certification within six years. They offer age appropriate work based learning opportunity at every grade level. And they partner with Texas Institutions of Higher Education, AKA Howard College, and regional businesses and industries giving students access to post secondary education and workforce training opportunities. So what does that mean? I have always said in Lamisa Texas, the biggest night of the year is graduation night. Pat, and that should be, and everybody's very proud and they should be. But that shouldn't, that should be one of the highlights of your life. It should not be the highlight of your life. And I think for too many of our students, from that point, when they get that diploma, walk off that stage and celebrate with their family, it's either all downhill or a flat line for the rest of their life. And that is not what we are here for. And this started one day in a conversation and I said, I, if we're doing our job, every student that gets a diploma from Lamisa I S D, they walk off that stage and they've got a path to a future. That future could be college, that future could be the workforce, but everybody has a route. And we have this great C T E program that I've told y'all, to me, is good, but we have not exploited it to the extent that we need to. And we have not even talked really about associate's degrees since I was here in two thousand fifteen. We got, and I've told y'all, we got so focused on this that we forgot this population. We should not forget any population. And so now we are funded through T E A for the next year so that we can explore ways. And we've already started meeting with all of our C T E teachers. Our kids will either walk off with a C T E certification that's gonna go home and get a job or all the way to an associate's degree or enough hours that they can walk into a college and already have about two years under their belt. And in some cases, I met a kid that has done both. He graduated from his associate's degree before he graduated high school. He walked that stage the week before he walked this stage. He went to work as a welder. Two years in the welding field, they needed a manager and because he had his associate's degree, guess who that did? Hell, and that dude's making money. And the goal is not to push everybody to college, the goal is not to push everybody to work. The goal is to push everybody to a future. Does that make sense? And that's what this is the beginning of. And it's gonna take hard work, it's gonna take some adults being uncomfortable. But it is time to raise the expectation so that we can raise the future for our kids. So if you're gonna print anything, you print that. So our first official meeting now that we've been approved is April fourth. And that is who all has been involved in this. This is not just us, I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, I've been working with the businesses in town. Because the goal is not just to help our kids, the goal is to help our community. And the biggest problem they tell me we have is they don't have a workforce. Well, we got one thousand five hundred and twenty-three Lamisa I S D students that can fill that workforce if we will prepare them to do so. The last thing I'll say on that, y'all can see where I wrote story, that's just to remind my old self to tell the story.
How much is that grant for?
Uh, sir?
How much is that grant for?
They they do not put a number on it. Yes, sir. And if we do, so this is how it works, we almost have to pass a test. Over the next year, they got to see that we're serious about it. And if we are, then it just grows and grows and grows and grows. There are some schools that have done good enough that when kids graduate, they still are getting money to help those kids pay for college. So that they can get paid, they can graduate with their associate's, get paid, go to college and become a right back to Lamisa Independent School District, start teaching. AKA Grow Your Own. So it's a, it it is, it is out there, but it's doable. And we are at bottom floor, but you got to start somewhere. So I'm very excited about it. The last thing on this, I was told by somebody that Lamisa I S D kids can't do it. And boy, do I hate hearing that. And I told them this story, and this is a true story, it's a superintendent friend of mine. And he was not the superintendent at the time, but he worked in the district. Everybody has G T, right? You've heard of G T? G T's picked in second grade-ish? Kindergarten, okay. Well, they ran a test one year, and this is in Color, no, California is where the district was. And they had all their kids take the G T test, but to 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 just test something out. They picked twelve kids that were not G T, that were well below G T, and they told them they were G T. And they told their parents they were G T. And then for the next twelve years while they were in school, they talked to them like they were G T. They educated them like they were G T. They gave them a work like they were in G T. And when those kids graduated high school, they performed higher than the G T kids. So I'm telling you, people will do whatever you expect from them if you build a relationship and do it the right way. And that's the goal with this. I cannot be more excited. It'll start small, but it'll grow and it'll grow. And it's gonna give our kids a true path to success. Questions on that? Absolutely, absolutely. Um okay, so moving on, legislative is short today. Please read Proposition eleven, because that's how it was worded on the ballot. Texas parents and guardians should have the right to select schools, whether public or private, for their children and their funding should follow the student. That's what you voted on, that is a lie. That's not what it is. And that's, that's why I'm frustrated, because that's what, if you're not in this boardroom and you're not paying attention, that does sound amazing. Right? That sounds amazing. I can pick my kid and go anywhere I want him to and the funding will follow. But that is not what it really is. Even though it's a lie, it still fell. You can see support for this proposition fell from ninety percent last year to seventy-seven percent this year. Because I do think more people are paying attention. But that's not what it is. So people asking, uh Josh Peterson, chief P B, called me one day and he said, explain this to me. I said, it's a lie. He said, so what if I pick up my kid and take him somewhere? I said, well, does that school accept her or not? Because it's school choice, not parent choice. And the funding doesn't just follow. So continue, don't tell people how to vote, but at least educate them. Because y'all know politicians lie, right? That being said, nine of the sixteen Republicans that opposed vouchers, they were all, I told y'all Governor Abbott's goal was to get them off. Well, he got nine of them off. So even though supportive of that is dropping, I would tell you, I think Governor Abbott's gonna keep pushing, pushing, pushing until he gets it. And so we keep fighting a good fight. And even if it passes, we just keep on rocking along. But I do want our people to continue to be educated. Alright, now I said in the weekly update over the weekend, it does not, I am not asking you to vote, it is on there if y'all would like to. But y'all have had a chance to kind of look at the calendar, what kind of questions might y'all have for me? I I I'm not gonna lie, I haven't really shown too many people. I always try to think of the teacher, the student, the staff. I always try to think of the teacher, the student, the staff, the families. And that was a place I would tell you, you know, and I remember our conversations last year. It, I've said it was the right calendar at the time. I think I keep trying to convince myself it was the right calendar at the time. But I think the one that I didn't put enough on was the families. Cuz there was a whole lot of days they had to figure out things to do with their kids, right? And I think that going back to this, it still takes care of our teachers, but I think it just addresses things a little better than the, so it is on there. If y'all decide to vote for it in a bit, but if you have questions. Okay. Second safety grant, Dr. Nelson, we have more money coming, so it's exciting. Would you like to talk about that for a minute?
Sure. The safety grant that we knew was coming, we didn't know how much for a long time. And then we were told 70,000 and then we were told 90,000, turned out to be 150,000.
Oh, wow.
No doubt, I'm excited.
We have a safety committee meeting next Wednesday. You're all welcome to come, you know, anytime you want. But one of the things that we've been exploring is what we're calling emergent technology. There's some technology out there now, they call it gunshot detection, where it goes on the outside of the building and it picks up a gunshot. It can alert the school, it can notify police. It's this whole thing related to automatic lockdowns and things like that, tracking faces. So if it picks up that a shot came from this direction, if you have the right camera system, they pan that way and focus on the face and look for the license plate. It's great technology, very FBI-ish, but for us, it's a little bit above what, what we need in terms of quickly responding and getting the police here. That's our best response. So in relation to that, we're looking at some other technologies that will go inside of the building. Everything from what they call weapons detection systems, which are updated fancy Jetson-style metal detectors. And then you have regular metal detectors and some other technologies. So next week, we'll kinda look at what we've had presentations on and then we'll start talking about, if you go with this type of technology, this is about the price range that it would take to fully equip us to on phase one. If you go with this type, it's this amount. And once we get that feedback from the committee members, then Mr. Richie and the administrative team will sit down to see where the money was stretched and how much we can get, of course. It will be more than $50,000, so the board will get to vote on that at some point in time in the future. What we would love to do is have whatever technology we're gonna have in place next year in-house before school's out or during the summer so that everybody can be trained and we can have it active on the first day of school.
Ken, thinking on the security updates and the stuff that we buy, do we have to vote on it like in public in detail what we're buying? Because we don't want the pub, the, a lot of the bad guys or whatever, the people that are going to cause harm.
That's, that's something that's actually, I'm glad you said that, that's talked about, Ron. They tell us, yes, you want to make the public aware and be transparent, but you don't wanna say too much cuz you don't wanna get a bad guy, right? So, no, we, we, that safety committee, he does a great job, they're very well-versed, but outside of that, it, it's not, it's something.
The law, the law allows us to, when we have a meeting, we have to have a public section of the meeting. But then immediately when we're discussing anything, we don't want Joe Blow, potential, you know, shooter, to know we go into closed session, the committee, and no one from outside can hear that. But you do have to vote on the expenditure, but we can simply put safety equipment. You can see the details behind the scene if, if it would potentially violate our confidentiality. But if there's gonna be something that sits in the front of the building and people can see it, then we probably don't have to protect that much. But there are a lot of things that we don't publish, such as the emergency operation plan, we don't publish it.
That's what I was talking about like a week. Tell your manager it's over 50, we gotta, that's what we're gonna have to, but like, not tell what this equipment.
We'll be pretty sure.
When, when, when we did that big drill last summer, which we got some more coming, that was something that was talked about to great lengths by all of the law enforcement, was we wanna let the public know that we're doing it, we wanna let them know how it went. They don't really need to know the details because there's somebody out there reading it that don't need to be. Some of the stuff that he has found is, is impressive because it doesn't just, it wouldn't just help our schools, it would help us at football games and basketball games and graduation cuz it's real light, it's easy to move. And I'll tell you, I worry way more about sporting events and the big stuff than I do school. I feel like I know our students. I always get worried when there's a whole lot of people out on, and officials and parents are not always the best mix. But it's exciting, when he told me the amount, I, cuz we thought we were gonna have to pick some stuff and now I think we're gonna be able to take care of everything. Cuz we're already ahead of the game, we're way ahead in so many districts. We're, now we're getting to buy some stuff that other districts don't, don't even get to think about. All right, so this one is in there. This is a, y'all hear me say all the time, there's stuff that hadn't hit us yet, but we always gotta be prepared in those. I'm sure y'all have read the paper at some point in time about some of these lawsuits with library books. My sister was in Emerald ISD until she retired. This was a huge headache for her as the, as the English person of the district because the way that books have been selected, you know? And again, it's not necessarily that bad books are getting selected, but books that we all had to read in school, now that can't be in some of our libraries. Like I always think of To Kill a Mockingbird, right? I taught that for 14 years, but you can't do that anymore because of some of the language and because of some of the content in it. And so there's a policy coming down. So what our policy does is it combines instructional materials and library books. There's policy coming and written that's gonna separate because that's two totally different processes and they can't be connected because the, the process to get the instructional materials is completely different from the books that you're putting in your library. And this policy does put the board in charge of the content in the library. And so what that would mean is in the future, when we have mass bulk buying, we're probably gonna have someone from the library come up here and kinda visit with y'all and give a presentation about the kinda stuff that they're buying so that y'all can ask them questions, possibly look at lists and possibly compare lists to the stuff that TDA puts out that is acceptable. And a lot of that's trust that I'm, I'm, we're, we're not going to purposely do it anyway, but it's still a good policy to have. So my question tonight, right now they're combined, it is coming, but they have to be separated. Would y'all like to go ahead? Tasby's already written a policy for those districts that would like to go ahead and get in, in front of the game and separate the two policies. And have one for instructional materials and one for elaborate materials. We're not doing it tonight, but if you tell me, I'll get it written, I'll get it all put together and at the next board meeting, I can present it and kinda look at it a little more depth. Is that something y'all'd like to go ahead and say? I concur. I think we need to jump on, okay? And there's some stuff in your attachments, I have a different one that I'll send y'all that I would like y'all to look at. All right, last two things, guys, and these are not on your agenda, but I told y'all I worked on speed bumps A through Z during the day. Well, facilities has been one, and they've always been one. I was talking to Keith Bryant, he was laughing at me cuz I don't know when Keith Bryant was superintendent here, but he said, that was one of my biggest headaches back then. He said, it's funny that it still is. I don't know, and I am really tired of kind of saying this, but we inherited a lot of messes, right? And I'm kinda tired of that and I'm really working on looking towards the future. And Frankie gets a lot of props cuz he does a lot of stuff he ain't paid to do cuz he's my friend and he won't say no to me. But he has really helped with facilities, but somewhere along the line, when Mr. Bryant got here, he said that we were charging. And I don't agree with that either, he didn't agree with that. So they stopped, but they didn't stop charging completely. But at some point between then and there, it got where we didn't charge anything. And so, yes, I want our kids to use our stuff 100%. What I am asking, and I looked at the policy and I've visited, I don't do anything without visiting with our attorney. That's what our policy does, it gives me the authority to charge entities that use the district facilities. Y'all may have thought we always were. At some point, it became the Wild Wild West of keys and badges all over Lamisa. We've got it under control, but it's just like everything. Now the adults that are under the control aren't loving it. What I am asking, are y'all okay if I start charging? And this is what our attorney suggested. Our kids need to be able to use it, but we need to be able to recoup the fees for custodians, utilities, and security. Are y'all all okay if I go that direction?
Explain that again?
You can use our, we're not charging you to use the facilities, we're charging you because we've been for the last few years, you play, you don't pay us anything. Then our custodians, we pay them to clean it up, our security, it's all out of our pocket, so we're losing money. I don't wanna make money, I wanna break even. Does that make sense?
You mean that the ones who run our league, like, like our little drillers?
Like Trey was, was here.
Right.
He was in the meeting, Frankie, we had, we had a meeting with all of them. So what they would do is we would charge them a deposit for anything that they mess up. Cuz, and again, I check with a whole lot of schools before I do anything. And this is kind of what they do. Nobody just says, here's the key. They get a deposit and they at least charge for the lights and the custodians. And I put security on there, not for practices, but for big tournaments. We had a fight last year with one of the tournaments, it wasn't inside, it was out in the parking lot. And I just, I, again, I am not, we gotta kinda get them reined in, if that makes sense. Questions?
I, I have a comment. Okay, so I was, I've been involved with this for many years. So when we first started getting the facilities, we did pay. We didn't pay for the actual facility, we paid for custodians and for lights.
What?
We did pay for that. And then we, we had it for years that way. And then it came, I wanna say when we had David and Chris, those two were, they were in charge. And those are the ones I always talked to. And that's when they said, we have to have a custodian there at all times. So we did have a custodian there, so we only ended up paying for custodial services and not, so that's where we got away from paying with that because they, you know, we... But I was in charge, so I went to every facility that was being used every night, every day. Kicked parents out, had nobody in there but the, the, all, just the, the kids playing and the coaches.
That was the rule.
That was the rule. And I went in every day, every night I went in, had everybody out and made sure everything was taken care of. Nothing was moved, I did that every night. On the games, same thing. We paid our custodians, we fed the custodians that were there that helped, they did great work for us. But I also had kids and Ron was, was there with me a lot of the time. We would pay, we, we would get the kids that, that were playing, cuz a lot of the kids, you know, just hanging around all day, would clean, we would give them the, some trash bags.
It's some good.
Up and down and do that, and we would, you know, feed them because they were just there all day with nobody there.
One of the things, and I, I'm not meaning to interrupt, I want you to finish. At the meeting the other night, we had every, all, all youth leagues, football, basketball, everybody was in this room. Cuz we needed to talk to them and kinda see what they thought. Some of them do that, right? And some of them do get the kids to clean up. Some of them already pay the custodians out of their pocket. But what about those that don't, right? Because if there's not something, I told them, I'm not telling you, now go ahead and pay them some more. But, and, and April, you look, just, I'd like to hear what you have to say. Cuz I can tell you, you're, you're not totally on board, but I'd like to know what you're thinking.
I'm thinking if it's for our, our league, like say Trey, for instance, he runs our league just for Lamisa kids around our area. I don't believe they should be charged now. I do know that he pays custodians or he'll help and he'll clean, I do know that. I do feel like we need to get a control of whoever has the key. But I know whenever I used to coach travel with my boys, I never had a key. We had a custodian come.
We do now, we've got the keys on lock.
But I feel like, okay, so for instance, if there's a big tournament and different towns are coming in, we charge for that. Chicken Fried Steak Festival, we charge for that. I do not believe we need to charge.
I'm okay with that.
Anybody else.
Because I will tell you where we're getting the bind is honestly with the tournaments.
Right.
Right. I, I just... I, I'm trying to walk that line and Frankie's gonna attest to this. My whole deal from the jump is we're not not taking care of the kids.
Right.
Again, it's not the kids, again, it's the adults that I'm having to make sure we keep in line. And I am fine with that because that is middle ground, but it accomplishes what I want. It makes them a bit more financially responsible when there's people in our gym.
I think they're gonna think twice before they throw something like that.
Are you, are y'all okay with that?
Here's the, what I've seen, he's built a league.
And it's great.
Yeah, it is. And, and you know how I feel about it. It, it dwindled to hardly nothing and then he built it back, which is awesome. And I'm glad the school provides a facility and lets those kids go there and everything. And that's, and that was before, even before my time. But I worry now that people see how easy it is supposedly to use those facilities and out-of-town organizers are coming, or, or gonna try to come in. I think they should be charged.
They, okay, so let me kinda, where we ended the other night, okay? Because today I got another facilities agreement from an attorney that we're gonna, we just didn't have time, and we're gonna look at it tomorrow. Where we ended the other day, Frankie, you can, you can speak up on this, is almost kinda where you were April with our kids, right? But we have already come up with a fee schedule for anybody that is not Lamisa. Like Grady has called and they wanna host a tennis tournament. Our tennis is not a lot of upkeep, but we're gonna run the lights. So we put together a contract that they're gonna have to pay is to use the facility.
Well, but it goes back to, you using our facility because you won't spend your tax money and your, your money to build your own facility.
Here's where I, where I see it, with our kids.
If you're another school.
And this is what I told them the other night, I am not trying to make money on our kids. At this point with our facilities the way they are, I will not lie, I think we are foolish if we don't try to make money off of neighboring schools that come here and try to play.
And my theory is, that's why we, we did this upgrade because we want other schools to come in. But for, I mean, but that's, but they're gonna, of course, have a fee because they're coming to use our facilities and that's what we want, you know? But at a price because, I mean, it costs us too to get it to where we want and we wanna take care of it.
And we have charged, we sat down last year and came up with, we, we got all of our facilities from, and I don't even know if you thought about tennis. Cuz it's really, fo- football, we get playoff games, and basketball, we get playoff games. And our tennis courts are starting to attract some stuff. And we did, we got what we had charged and I told them, I just think it's way too low. Because I was a football coach, I knew what it cost when we would go rent, when, when you're in the playoffs, I knew what it cost. And so, again, we pulled everybody around and we tried to make it more com- I would say more compatible to what we now have to offer. You got any comments on that? I mean, we, we went through a whole lot of stuff to make sure that at the, because when, when you, when we host a playoff game, there's officials, there's gate, there's score people, there's custodians, there's security. And we were not even charging outside teams enough to cover all that. In my opinion, we're at the stage now where we cover it and make a little bit on top of it. Agreed or no?
About the policy, should be if you live within Dawson County or if you live within Lamisa ISD school district?
I think it's a Lamisa ISD student.
That's what I'm, if you live within the district because they're taxpayers in the district.
So I think it could be any, you know?
And honestly, like Trey's league, I know he's got some kids. I, I, you know, I mean, if it's a Lamisa, I, I'll do whatever, I, I just.
I'm glad that the league has grown.
As has the volleyball.
And I'm impressed that we have still, we allow to use the new facilities.
No, only on terms, there's no practice there.
That blows me away, but I'm impressed we do. I mean, I, I'm glad they're in the gyms cuz the kids, I mean, as a young kid, I'd been like, yeah, I mean.
Well, let me say on that, when, when they build, when they put turf down in the bowl when I was a kid, my dad at first didn't want people to play in it, but then he re, he told me one day, you know what? Lamisa Texas, I mean, Sweetwater Texas, they paid for this, they deserve to get, to get to use it.
I'm, I'm good with what April said. If it's the league, it's okay cuz it's our kids. But when you host tournament and you bring other kids and other, that's where.
And you're making money.
You're making money.
They are.
And that's okay, but it's gotta cost because it's coming out of our.
So am I?
I just remember the, I just, I just remember the tournament during the Chicken Fried Steak Festival last year. And I, it was during tax season and I go home for lunch on that Saturday and I had never seen so many cars everywhere, all over.
But Mr. Telchik, we had talked with, back then, they didn't even ask them to provide security. We're lucky that it didn't end in something way worse.
So this means they're gonna pay a fee for the custodial, they're gonna pay for the, uh, fee for the utilities? And then as far as security, we provided and he pays for?
But they would pay for it.
Okay, because, I mean.
What I'm saying is every, we would not be out of pocket.
No. What I was gonna make on that was my understanding is there were teams coming in from out of state.
There were, yes.
That were playing here. And this may sound bad, but you know, when you've got outsiders coming in like that, they don't care about your facilities.
And that was, and I think I mentioned to somebody, like when, even when Denver City comes here, why would they wanna take care of our facility?
Right.
Right. But that's where this spawned from and it, it's been a hard, cuz I don't wanna, I, I'm, I'm, April, I'm right there with you. I, I don't want to ever, our kids are always first and foremost in my mind. Unfortunately, adults keep getting in the way. But I think this is a good middle ground if, if y'all are good with it.
This is something like you talk about, you, you deal with little things like this more than academics. We've talked about this longer than any academic.
And you know, that's why I put the PTEC thing back to the front because I wanted us to keep, to me, that's, that's, that's the big thing we're working for, is.
Cuz a tournament that size, that I was talking about, they made some money.
Oh, they're making money, and, and, and that's okay.
Stars, we did also, I mean, we know what those, that's why we do it. It's not because, we want to, it's for the fun reason to get them to the next level.
Been doing that, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just curious, have they even Given maybe a donation, say, you know what, out of, you know, out of their heart, say, you know what, we're gonna donate for the students. I mean, you know, I'm just curious to see if they did.
Well, Frankie, talk about the meeting a little bit. Yeah, and y'all know Trey ta-talked the most, but we had the football people there too. I mean, they were receptive, but no, uh, they haven't done that. But that's why I've told him, we, we gotta figure out a way to at least even this, even this thing, uh, without punishing our kids at all. You want to talk about it at all?
Yeah, this was that Tuesday, and we had.
And we had Coach Ramos come because I thought it was important that he's, he's there.
We had maybe eight people in the room, footballers and, and then the rest of the basketball. And just basically went over what we've experienced this year, and it's Beginning of the year, we tried to simplify the process as much as we could. There was ten different applications before the fees were About a fourth of what we're on before. So we tried to make it simple. And so, but here recently, phone calls have been insane.
And it's gotten better last couple weeks. There was a stretch where my phone was going off the hood.
But they've created this problem between themselves.
A hundred percent, and that's part of what we taught them was, the biggest thing to this is y'all started getting them.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, but, you know, and, and I've got a meeting with one of them tomorrow. You know, but I think this would at least allow us to treat our kids exactly right, but when they're bringing in the big stuff. Recouping our fees and making sure that our stuff's taken care of.
Can I throw something out? Just two issues. One is safety and security. There's a new trend where bad guys are coming into buildings during events like that, hiding in hidey hole areas.
Right.
Until the kids are back in school. That's one concern. So I think having our officers on duty.
I would agree.
And we pay them, because that's a Fair League Standards Act issue, even with our custodians. I encountered that when I was at Permian. I, being associate, I took care of all the rentals. And when the groups, before I started enforcing it, it was always the law and the rule, they would pay the custodians. But if a custodian is hurt while commit, uh, performing this off the book duty, the thing claims work was caught. That's an issue. Uh, if there is an injury or liability, they can't file assault for assault leave, which is a Texas right, the, the most protected right any employee has. Because it basically covers you for three years at almost full salary, you're assaulted at work. That throws that into question, so There's some Fair League Standards Act concerns with paying people, letting people pay people out of pocket.
And that's why we're trying to cease. That, this puts it all official.
And the reason I mentioned it is because if we don't even charge the locals that minimum and, and we don't collect that and pay our own people. Then we create those issues for ourselves, and it may never bite us, but when it bites us, it's gonna be expensive.
I think it's a good plan.
I think we're all on site board as far as.
And you said they were gonna pay a deposit for damages, okay?
Well, we didn't this year, but again, when I, again, I, I talked about. Nothing in the big one. Kenny Borla had two things broke in the north gym.
At the north.
Yes.
Who handles, I know like when we were in it, we had to go to the principal at the campus. Shelley was the principal at the campus. I had to get.
To reserve?
To reserve.
No, we do it all.
Seven days out or that week. She wouldn't put my name down on the days I told her. I had to go to the school and with her secretary and do it.
Again, again, and this is one of the things I, I tell y'all. Like if we're zero to a hundred, we're better than we were, but we're still working on it. That's one of the many things. Now we've got A certain amount of days you have to get. We've got forms you have to turn in. We've got calendar that multiple people keep. We, we're, we're on the right track. We're just still working on some.
We still have like only kids and coaches in there to the gym.
Yes, yes. We sat during those tournaments, which is when I really am much.
So what we're saying is for like, let's just say Trey's league or the league that we host for our kids, we're not charging, but for Tournaments and they bring in outside, that's in your, any other reason.
And then when it has nothing to do at all with our people and it's just another school when they use our stuff, we
Was he okay?
Charge the full thing. They really don't have a choice to be okay with it. I mean, but, but they were, I mean, y'all know Mr. Brer and, and he, he talked. I thought, did you think they were pretty on board with it?
Yeah, everybody agreed. They, they understood that right now when we were having to pay out pocket expenses Collecting nothing, benefiting nothing, but when we explained our goal is to just have a place where our kids can use. And our custodians being there, whether you're paying them or not, we still have to pay them. So it may save you some money, we still can add some to it. That's your prerogative, but they, they would.
But if they, if we pay them, they're paying us for the difference, right?
What I'm saying is, like, they pay us a fee and they're like, out of that fee, I give this. Does that make sense?
I don't know if the fees are handed down.
Well, like, let's say you pay the, oh, that's what I'm saying. We haven't been. That's what I'm asking. On those, can we make sure the fees that we charge are enough to cover all of this?
For sure.
Okay, perfect, because they weren't.
Yeah, no, for sure.
It was, uh, yeah, I'm telling you guys, it's, we still, I mean, luckily we have the badges and Frankie can just turn things on and off. But the other day, somebody wanted to use softball field and he was gonna say yes, and they said, well, I already have a key. And I'm like, and so we're making that a badge, you know, because we're just trying to get it.
And, and I know you had mentioned, or that was an idea, just because I know sometimes nobody ever wants to go to the person in charge of the, the league because
We addressed all that with them.
When, when, when the league does start, I think they should have a meeting.
But that's what I'm saying. We, we, that was one of, for next year, one of the requirements is there's a parent meeting at the beginning of your leagues. So that the parents in the room do know, when I have an issue, that's my person. I, I felt like they were receptive. Frankie felt like, it was law.
So on an all weekend tournament, about how much are we out?
I mean, it's all day, Ernest. Uh, I mean, those things start early and go late. I mean, there's no way I could add it up, but What we would do is we've pulled some kind of electricity voltage, like charts to kind of see if you're in there for an hour, how much that would cost. I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to make money on our kids. I just want the stuff.
Yeah, what's a rough ballist? I mean, we're talking about seven, eight thousand dollars?
Oh, no, 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 no.
One of the, one of the things to consider is those are our full-time employees.
Understand it.
So when they, when they do their custodial or they, they do their security, they're on overtime.
So for instance, Ernest, like when we were pulling stuff and kind of formulating, like let's say you don't have any Even if you had nothing to do with La Mesa I S D and you said, hey, I want to come rent your gym. Let's do football field because that's easier. What we worked up was a fee schedule and it was not even close to seven, eight thousand. I mean, it's very reasonable. But what that did is it made sure we had money to pay our gate, our security, our clock, our announcer. And now make a little bit on top of that to keep for ourselves, but I, I mean, what is it? I can't, I, I haven't looked at it, but I mean, it's You said seven, eight thousand, it's not even a ballpark. It's still reasonable enough that somebody would want to come pay it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted a ballpark number, just, I just want to know.
I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do. When we look at the new contract I got, if we make any changes, I'll just send all of y'all a copy of it so y'all can kind of see what we charged.
I think we paid for the weekend gym three hundred, but that was the old gym.
That was the old gym.
Could be false. It was an old, small weekend gym. I think it was three hundred for that.
But I'll send you what we worked up, so y'all kind of have an idea.
Have a question. You say these other schools or other that come in, now are we talking about just schools that are, that wanted to come do their playoff games, like?
So like when, uh, where we're at is a perfect, like when you get to the second or third round in football, let's use football, Cindy. It's a good meeting place for those El Paso schools and those metro places. That, that's.
Those are the only ones we're allowing to come, right? We're not allowing little dribblers to come.
No, 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 no. When I talk about that, I'm talking about like
Just schools.
U I L contest. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I wasn't clear.
No, okay.
But like this last weekend or weekend before, was it?
Last weekend.
Southwest hoops.
Yeah.
That's out of Lubbock, right?
That, that's out of Lubbock.
Or they're gonna do one? Southwest hoops. I saw the advertisement for it here.
Here?
Who, who boasted it?
I just saw it.
Well, anyway.
Well, he has reservations for our kids right now.
Just for our kids. And now this is just, like, like she said, just our league teams, not select teams. Because that's the way it used to be. It used to only just be, it used to just be your league, your city league. Not select teams, not your travel select teams.
Don't tell me, our, our La Mesa kids on that team?
There's some, but we have someone all over the place.
I think it's just the, the La Mesa league because the travel team that you get other players playing with travel team.
League that can use it.
Yeah, La Mesa league.
If it's, because anything, if you're profiting from it.
Y'all, y'all just, y'all, y'all just.
La Mesa league is good.
Well, I mean, we gotta consider.
Because we do, we've already got, we've got a request for the softball field that is, that's a travel league. That's got some La Mesa kids on it, and it's caused by a La Mesa person. Do we want to tell that person no?
To practice or to tournament?
I'd say practice, yes, tournament.
Practice, yes, tournament. I look at it cleanly like this, and I told him this. I said, do we have La Mesa kids on it?
Yes.
That, that's how I look at it. I try not to get too much in the meat of our La Mesa kids on it.
Here, here's, here's the benefit for the La Mesa kid. Probably one night a week, they're going to another, they're going out of town to facilities to practice. And they're saying, hey, we can reduce our travel if we can, if y'all will come here one night.
See, in the way I look at it, on that deal, that give, if y'all are a team and Cindy and Ernest are from La Mesa. And we let y'all practice in our facility for free, and you go to Klondike, and you go to O'Donnell, and you come and look at our facilities, guess where you may go next year? La Mesa.
Right.
You know, so I think it's a built-in advertisement.
How many select teams do we actually have?
The only one is that softball, we've only had one softball team match. We haven't had anybody else.
Oh, we have some more.
But that, we, we don't know.
From different towns that come in?
Well, but the, but that's, that's not part of the La Mesa league.
Right.
That's not part of the La Mesa league.
Is it differentiated on the application? Does that make sense?
Not one specifically says travel team.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So that's easy then, that's easy. It's, it does say travel team.
It does say travel team? Like what, they can use them also? I mean, to host a tournament?
We said no to tournament.
They want to pay the fee though, right?
If they want to, yeah, if they pay, they pay. That's totally different, yes.
That's what I think, yeah.
I just think, and I've told, this, we've had a lot of talks about this. We want to make sure we take care, but we, 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 we don't want to get
No, no.
Too much into the weeds of going and checking, hey, where you go to school?
If it's our kids, we do it. If it's anybody else, they're okay.
Okay, perfect, perfect. We're good? Okay. Last thing, and it's quick, and y'all are gonna laugh at this one, because they asked us to all talk to y'all about the eclipse. So the eclipse is April eighth, and there are, uh, schools that, and I wrote it here. The path of totality is what they're calling the path of schools that are gonna be in complete darkness. T A is making them closed for safety reasons. We aren't that, okay? Yeah, like out in San Antonio area and all there, they're, they're closing down for the day. I, I will monitor, but I was gonna tell you, I would rather not close. Now, if some teachers want to use it for academic experience, because that's an awesome thing, knock, knock yourself out as long as you're smart and responsible.
I remember looking at, going outside and science and looking, making little.
Yeah, we'll make sure, but I do think it's a great experience. I just don't want to close.
We doing any contingency plans?
In case of the eclipse, well.
No, I started seeing like These stories and theories and all about it knocking out stuff.
Like Y two K?
Yeah, we doing any type of like possible.
I feel like we're prepared, and, and I feel like this week's kind of helped us because we've had stuff going out right and left, and Sellers has been on it, but I, I think we'd be prepared. Yes, sir. I just, I just don't want to, uh, I don't think, I think we'll see it, but we're not gonna go totally dark, and I, I just don't see the point in keeping kids home. I'd rather have them there, go look at it, study it, and then go back to, go back.
They have their houses in Alka F G Texas, because they say that's like the, the center epitome of it in Texas.
Okay, sorry, guys. I know that was lengthy, but that was important stuff. So thank y'all very much.
Okay, I guess now we'll go to board action items. First one is deliberation and possible action to approve Nancy Lozada as an election judge for May fourth, twenty twenty four election.
Make a motion to approve this president?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Second, deliberation and possible action to approve the district calendar for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
That's how we do the next one. Just in case, just in case something comes up that
I read out when you said twenty four, twenty five. I cannot believe it is two thousand twenty four, twenty five, so that's crazy.
If it, if it's still plenty of time in April.
Yeah, I would like to get it done by April for sure. Yes, yes.
Okay, we're gonna table. Second item. Um, third is deliberation and possible action, action to certify April Martinez as an un- Unopposed for election for office for District Three for the election scheduled to be held on May fourth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion and approve his president?
I approve. Okay, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Yo, act right.
Fourth is deliberation and possible action to cancel the election schedule to be held on May fourth, twenty twenty four. In accordance with section two point oh five three A of the Texas Election Code, Aiko Martinez has been certified as un- Unopposed and is hereby elected as the Board of Trustees for District Three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Congratulations, eh? No, seriously, that's awesome. Congrats.
Next is deliberation and possible action to change the current committed local funds from twelve million. Oh, no, sorry. And the same, same thing as the other one. We already did five and six.
We didn't do the E R I contract yet?
Did we? I don't remember if we had a motion on it. Let's go ahead and have a motion just to make sure. We talked about it.
Make a motion to approve this president?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six to zero. Okay, there being no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.